Ready as we're gonna be here. Called to order the regular common council meeting, Monday, April 6th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Braun?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Radke? Burdick?
Yes.
Okay, do we know if Ann's connected?
Um, we have a total of five callers that I don't know. She may have muted herself, but I'm not sure.
Is that a dog barking?
Yeah.
I thought maybe it was a dog answering for her.
Do you guys have me?
Is this Ann?
No, this is Tara.
Yep, we have you.
Put your hand up.
Okay, so everybody's either here or on the phone for the council. It's gonna be a little different tonight. Everything's gonna have to be a roll call, and if you make a motion, state your name as you make the motion, and your name as you second it. And anytime you want to speak, state your name before you speak, so we can know who's talking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Whoa, this is Sam.
Hi, Sam.
Arquino.
Very good.
And reporter.
Okay.
You'll have to speak up, I don't have any viewing mechanism, I have my cell phone.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, let's attempt to move on here, unless there's anything else we needed to put out there for the process tonight. Everybody's good? Guess the Pledge of Allegiance is next.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his will, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed on Friday, April 3rd. Agendas were posted at City Hall, Post Office, and our website.
And then the amended agenda was posted today for the emergency action?
Yes, at the same locations.
And everybody has a copy of the amended? Okay, so council acceptance of agenda.
Candy Davis, motion to accept agenda.
Debbie Olson, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes. And another different item tonight is, personal appearances are gonna be both for non-agenda and agenda items, because after this, we will be muting the calls, so we don't get a lot of background noise from the external audience, so if there's anyone that wishes to speak on anything on the agenda or otherwise, state your name. Okay. Is this where we want to mute the? Next item is, consider approval of the minutes for March 16th, 2020 council meeting.
Issa, motion to approve minutes, March 16th council meeting.
Burdick, second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, roll call.
Issa?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun? 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 Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Please, just to be clear, the council people are not muted, so if we're hearing background noise, just so in case someone on the council thought that you were muted, we need to hear from you, so you are not, but the other audience participants are.
This is Ann, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And since we didn't have any committee meetings, we'll move on to consider approval of the bills and payroll.
Candy Davis, motion to approve, excuse me, bills and payroll, in the amount of $236,879.18.
Issa, second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke? Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Motion passes. No licenses tonight?
Correct.
Next item is to consider amendment to Cedar Corp contract for South Main Street reconstruction for the right of Way Platt.
Davis, motion to approve.
Second.
Was that Sarah?
Sarah, that was Sarah. Yes.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider downtown lighting upgrades.
Davis, motion to approve downtown lighting upgrades, for a total cost of $27,193.
Olson, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the lighting upgrades?
Were we to select fixtures, or register a?
Favorite one?
Yeah.
I think we decided that already, didn't we?
No, we've had a conversation.
Unofficially?
Yeah, unofficially, we've traded several of them out, the one that's here at City Hall is the one in this light right now here is the one we're not in. The regular streetlights, and then we really only have one option right now for the tall streetlights. So the only other place right now for you to look at on this list was an old acrylic bulb, so that is where we're headed. So we did have some other ones in that were very bright and very white, and we had some objections from several people about how stark they were, so we found a warmer, lower, flattish one that we thought will be sufficient, and closer than clandestine.
Braun, with my understanding that the energy efficiency will hold up for the cost either way.
Yeah, there is an energy saving certainly every year. A few years ago, when Alliance Energy looked at it, they estimated about $3,600 a year. Again, that number's a couple years old, and then there's some measurable savings in maintenance, because these lights have such a long life. So this certainly is payback, this is a tip expenditure on top of the payback, so for lots of reasons, this project makes a lot of sense to do. And since we can do it in-house, it's so much cheaper.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, motion is to do the downtown lighting upgrades, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider declaring old scoreboard and playground equipment surplus.
Davis, motion to approve.
Burdick, second.
Any discussion?
Is there anywhere else that we could use it, rather than declaring it surplus?
The scoreboard is broken, so the only piece of equipment that is truly surplus that can be reused, and the only reason we're declaring it surplus is to someone asked, is the dinosaur body, that's not in the best shape, but it's off of its, you know, it's not on its rocker anymore, and so we just checked with our insurance company, it's off its rocker. Something like that. The insurance company said because it isn't functioning, normally playground equipment, we can't sell because of liability reasons, so normally we don't. So what we took out's gonna be recycled, except someone really wanted that dinosaur just to sit on the ground, so they were okay with it, so we obviously can just give that to someone, so we'll go through the process to see if we want old purple dinosaur.
Okay.
That's the only piece from what we removed that's up for, not really used, to be used.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? There was a little delay getting the phone conversation back and forth here, so a little more hesitant to move on with things here. Okay, motion to declare the old scoreboard and playground equipment surplus, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the next item is to consider crack filling quotes.
Davis, make a motion to approve low bid for, to Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC, in the amount of $32,101.
Olson, second.
Got one of them. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. Howard, we had in public works, and council had approved a couple of different things, and we gave you direction to, well, what streets did we end up deciding on that, and how close it was it, because it looks like, well, the two budgets, the two together came out slightly over what we had originally planned.
For those of you listening not here, that was Burdick questioning that.
There were a couple of changes to the initial plan. Marlboro and Marlboro in total was taken out for crack filling. We determined that that road was probably too far gone, so we replaced that with Newville, and we added in racetrack park, including the parking lots, to be crack filled. And then we shortened up the section of Hayne Road that was to be crack filled, because that, again, part of it's in good shape, part of it is too far gone. So those were adjustments made on the crack filling. Chip ceiling, we didn't change much. I think that was.
That's up next, okay.
Actually stayed the same, but that's next, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
This is Braun, this quick, I don't know, is this connected to all 101 microphones in the council room?
Yes.
You're amplified in the council room.
Is that a little thing?
Okay.
Well, I actually can't hear some of the people that are in the room.
All right, so if you guys could get really into your microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to accept the quote from Farmer for crack filling, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is consider the seal coating quotes.
Davis, motion to approve seal coating quotes from the low bidder, which is Farner Asphalt Services LLC, in the amount of $113,935.
Burdick, second.
Any discussion?
Yes, same thing on that one.
I can get you the exact list, but this one did not change from the original plan.
Jim, you want us to take that microphone that's pointed away from you, or do we need that out there right now?
I was using it.
Yeah, as long as you're talking in the normal.
Right, okay. Still looks like it went considerably over what our estimates were.
You know, Jim, one thing that might not be accounted for here is, we had, the $170,000 was for our street maintenance program, kind of the issue was the goal. And then in a subsequent meeting, there was a conversation regarding the business park, and using a separate set of funds to do the business park. So if you take the business park streets for crack filling and chip sealing out, those streets alone are almost $60,000. So at this point, I've got, we've calculated all this to make sure we're still within the budget that we had originally set, and there's still about $57,000 available of that $170,000. And the estimates for the business park, for everything, which we don't have known over yet, that was 113, I'm going on memory, is that right, Howard?
That's correct.
So it looks like we're still well within our numbers, and if you'd like, I can share this for you with you. Is that what you're?
Yeah, well, I guess the business park, yeah, I wasn't looking, but.
Okay, good.
That was the other, we had a 92 somewhere that we had, right?
Oh, the 92 was the amount we have in this year's 2020 budget for all the things related to streets. So it's the 170 minus what we spent last year in 2019, and then it was the 92, which is in our regular budget.
Okay.
And then the business park streets are another separate piece funded through a different source. Does that help?
Okay, yeah, good.
Again, I can share if anyone wants the numbers, we're keeping track of this to make sure we're on target.
And we were pretty close on what you had, anyway, as far as.
Yeah, if you add it all together, all my estimates and what we actually have here, we actually came out $13,000 less.
Okay, okay, with that. All right, good, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Motion to accept the seal coating quote, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything from the fire district to report?
Oh, yes, we do. I have one quick thing to comment on, and then we'll turn it over to Chief Pickering, because I know he'll have plenty to talk about, and I would assume, Chief, it would be best for you to come up to this microphone. In conjunction with the social distancing, the fire district board will not be meeting this month, probably not next month. We'll see how things go as far as having the board meeting. We will be paying our monthly bills through our normal process of the president, John Sherman, myself as treasurer, looking through the bills, making sure everything looks right, and working with chief. We will pay those bills, and then at our first available fire district board, we will make sure that they are approved as normal as they should, but just for safety purposes, we won't be holding board meetings this month or next month for sure, probably.
And again, for those of you listening not here, that was Candy Davis.
I'm sorry.
Okay, this is new stuff.
And Chief Pickering?
I'll spend probably, I think, most of the time answering any questions you have, and I know Chief Kowalski, can maybe, he and I can tag team a little bit on this. As has been said, I think in numerous venues, we're living in uncharted waters. One of the things that the public safety community has been wrestling with is trying to take the best advice we can get nationally, within the state, within the county, and trying to adapt, sometimes multiple times a day. So if you talk to any of our staff, they may get a direction at 10 o'clock, and then they get a evolution of that direction at 2 o'clock. So it has been very fluid. Rock County is clearly in a community spread mode, and so we have collectively taken a lot of precautions, both for the citizens that we come in contact with, but more importantly, to protect our personnel, because we have only so many people. And if we get to a point where enough of our people are in quarantine protocols, and I'll comment on that here in a second, it's gonna affect our ability to respond. So we've been doing a lot of things to basically try to protect our people, so that we can continue to respond. Activity has been equal to and slightly above where we were last year. We have not seen a reduction in just basic activity, whether it's vehicle crashes, fire calls, or EMS calls, the activity continues to still be higher than it was last year. One of the biggest things we've been wrestling with from an EMS perspective is, we started out with a set of questions that were asked everyone who called in, and if they said yes to this, and then yes to that, there was a whole matrix that was laid out, then we treated it as a potential positive. Only because we're limited in what we can say under federal law, we had a couple of situations that were absolutely atypical to any of the questions. Yet we found out later that we had had contact with a positive patient. So we have evolved over the last couple of weeks now to basically treating every call we go on, regardless of what the reported situation is, and strangely enough, that is now extending to even fire calls. And we're just treating every situation as a potential contact. The biggest consequence on the EMS side is, we are cleaning the ambulance, or ambulances, every day, and then following potential contact situations. So it's not just we get back to quarters, and the ambulance can be back in service for another call. There's another hour after that where we're taking the resources out of service, while we're making sure everything gets cleaned before we can put them back in service. So that's kind of the broad topics, and I will certainly try to answer any questions that the council has about specifics, shy of not being able to talk about patient specifics.
Issa, question. If a unit is in that post-contact rehab, has there been any prospect of the potential for a delay in response to the next call?
The potential exists, we have not had any situations where that has occurred, maybe, I'd love to say with foresight, although I can't quite stretch it that far. We now have three ambulances, right? We added an additional one into the fleet. So what we're able to do is, if there is a call while one of them is still in the decon protocol, we've got two more that we can utilize. It would only become a situation if we get into multiple calls, multiple units in decon. This issue, again, Chief Kowalski and I sit every day, I guess maybe what I should say, just so that everyone's aware of, Rock County as a whole, led by our emergency management division, is doing just an unbelievable job communicating with us. We get together every day, county public health, emergency management, the sheriff's department, all the law enforcement agencies in the county, all the fire and EMS agencies in the county, and all the hospitals in the county. And we talk, we have a very structured agenda, we go through and we get a status as to where we are at any point in time, every day of the week. And one of the things that we use that to do, you know, there's two things. Supplies are a major issue, especially now when we're going, we're using masks, gloves, gowns on every contact. The burn rate, or what we refer to as burn rate, the use of supplies is actually exponentially greater than what was planned. So the agencies and the departments in the county are working unbelievably well together, that if somebody's shy of large gloves, somebody else will say, hey, I got a couple boxes of that, I'll get them down to you. We ran into a situation on a Friday afternoon where all of a sudden we were short on gowns. Rock County Highway Department, which you would absolutely never think of, right, as a potential supplier of protective equipment, they had some gowns that they use when they're doing, I can't remember if it was crack filling or whatever it was they use them for, but they had them. And the director of the highway department spoke up and said, I'll have a case of them up to you in 10 minutes. And so the work that's being done between all the agencies and the entities in the county is unbelievably impressive. But where I was going with that in terms of resource, we've already started to talk between the fire and EMS providers, what happens if Edgerton gets to the point where we can't, you know, we have an ambulance problem. And so there is depth built into our system, our regular system of mutual aid. We just know that we're living in unprecedented times, and we're learning almost every hour. If nothing else, normal business of the district, it's kind of normal business of the district, runs are a little high, and we're just a tad bit over budget, but we got the rest of the year to figure that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is to consider the ratification of, declaration of emergency proclaimed on March 23rd, 2020.
Issa, motion to ratify the declaration as the mayor states.
Davis, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
For clarification, was that a yes from Ann? I had a hard time hearing it myself, okay, so.
I don't know either, I was.
Radke, was that a yes vote?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, motion passes, six, six, nothing. Next item is, consider invoking emergency authority to temporarily modify open burning ordinance 17.06, Baron 19B, to prohibit all open burning except in a grill for cooking food.
Davis, motion to approve.
Issa, second.
Any discussion?
Is the reason for this just to lower the potential for fire calls? Or is it because of its dryout, or?
The DNR enacted the one for their areas, and I think it's a good share to do with the exposure to emergency personnel. Chief, if you want to.
Yeah, that's exactly the issue. What we're trying to do is anything possible to eliminate getting the department paged to events where we bring our personnel together. And so this is just a proactive effort, very similar, as the mayor mentions, to what the DNR did in their areas. We're just not in a DNR protection area, so it's up to us to do it locally.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider modifications.
This is Braun, I'm a little bit feedback at the moment.
Lot of feedback at the moment?
There's a lot of background noise here, is it like a high pitch, so we're? Is it like a high pitch or is it background noise?
It sounds like someone shuffling things around, moving it.
Yeah, it does here too. I'm not sure that it's coming from here.
Don't think it's from here.
No.
Ann, are you shuffling papers?
Not anymore.
Because otherwise we wouldn't hear anybody else, would we? It's just Sarah and Ann.
Yeah, no.
Can you ask if it's changed?
Is it better now?
Better, thank you.
Okay. Where are we at here? Did we have a motion on the...
No, we're on the item number 11. There's no motion yet.
Hold on.
I'd like to make a motion then to consider modifications to personnel policies in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. This is Debbie Olson.
ESU, second.
Sorry, I didn't read that yet, did I? Got distracted by the background.
Sorry.
Thank you. Oh, that's good. Okay, now we have a motion and a second on there. Hearing none, roll call.
Olson?
Yes.
ESU?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the next item is to consider extraterritorial land division for Miller Becker, Section 25, Albion Township.
Davis, motion to approve.
Olson, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
ESU?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider mayor's committee appointments. Mike Droutt resigned from the police commission. Must have been upset. I told him he wouldn't have anything to do and I asked him to get on it and he was too busy and didn't want to do it anymore, so thought I lied to him, but a lot of things happened in that two-year span while he was on there. I'd like to nominate Joshua Lee to fill that spot. He'd be for just over a year right now to fill that current term of Mike's.
Davis, second.
You have to make the motion.
Oh, I thought you said I'd like to...
I'd like to nominate him, but you gotta...
Okay, Davis, make a motion to nominate Joshua Lee to the police commission. Is that the correct...
Yes.
Burdick, second.
Appoint him?
Appoint him?
Burdick, second.
Any discussion on the appointment of Josh Lee to the police commission? Anybody want to see what I have for him here?
It was included in your packet.
You got it all? Okay, that's right, we did put that in there. Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
ESU?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Josh authorized me to say thank you.
Yes.
Absolutely. Tell him he's not going to be busy at all and nothing, nothing.
I did not.
Tell him we said that.
I said that to Lisa and look what happened.
Good choice. Okay, the next item is to consider proposed Department of Revenue tax appeal settlement to reduce assessed value at 405 East Fulton Street, which is the Highway Trailer Dorsey Certified Parts building now.
We have received a request from the Department of Revenue Attorney, Ms. Altshol. She had proposed a settlement to the owner, who as you know was challenging their assessment for a number of tax years. The proposed resolution would reduce the assessed value by $190,065 for each of the tax years involved, bringing the assessment to $2,559, well, $559,635. This is a small change, but it will result in a reduction in tax revenues to the city. Normally, we wouldn't be bringing such a small reduction, such a small proposal forward, but the owner has indicated a willingness to accept such a small reduction because it saves them the cost of an appraisal. So they're looking at it as a cost savings. We do not have to accept the proposal. We could essentially veto it, in which case we would be going forward and we'd have to prove the value. We'd incur some viral costs, both in appraisal as well as attorney's fees for it. They have a companion case in the city of Janesville that was settled, that they have fully resolved on the same basis. Numbers are all different, of course, but also a very small, modest change. This is going backwards. We don't like it, but because the costs to the city of going forward and challenging it are more than the cost of the difference in the assessed value, I really, just on a business standpoint, I'm recommending that you accept it.
What is the current assessed value?
For those listening out in the audience, not here, that was Attorney Morgan with the explanation on that.
Question, Brian, Miss Olson. Hi, I can't. The question was, what's the current valuation? Well, the... Yeah, the current valuation is what I formally do, I call it, is $2,559,635, and it reduces that by $190,065 in each 17 and 18.
So it would be $2 million, I don't know. What does that amount to?
It amounts in taxes, $9,080.
The reduction?
That's for two years of taxes, you pay that property owner back that amount.
$4,500 per year.
And we would be paying him back from, are we backdating this?
Yeah.
He paid, and one of the requirements of challenging is that you pay into the system and then you can challenge it.
As I recall, I believe that we voted this down before in another meeting.
Not this one.
As to lowering the assessed value on it. I believe that was before the council one other time.
Yep. We had a settlement several years ago for, I think it was three years with the taxes, where it cost us $24,000 because they went all the way to the state credit fund.
No, but I mean the certified parts. Didn't we have a discussion about them?
Yeah, and they did this for their 14 and whatever, 13 taxes. They'll do this every year, it appears. So we had it one other time when we took it all, we didn't agree. We took it all the way to the state's highest tax court and our settlement, we ended up paying him, returning $24,000 back in taxes to him for that settlement.
How long ago was that?
I don't know. It predates me. I don't have institutional knowledge.
I've been on the council for three years and I do remember talking about this before.
We talked about a request and we did not accept the request, but it wasn't, had been filed at that point.
Oh.
So this goes on in several stages and there's a challenge before the other one is settled, so it's been five or six years that this, they're all, every year is challenged.
So you said it would be about $4,500 a year?
Correct.
Then we would have to return that for two years?
Correct.
And then going forward, we'd be losing $4,500 a year as well or in that vicinity?
The assessed value would be whatever the new assessed value is, but I don't know if they'll challenge it, but as Mona said, they have historically challenged, so they may very well challenge again.
Is that coming from all the taxing entities, the ninth house, just from us?
We can't charge it back because it's too late. It's past the timeframe and we can charge back either taxing entity, so it'll come out of TIF 7, all of TIF 7 it'll be ours. If they had been a little earlier in the year, we might have been able to charge back 18's taxes to the other taxing jurisdictions.
This is Clerk Haglund. Actually, in a TIF district, it's all the cities because the other taxing jurisdictions...
Are not getting anything.
Aren't getting, yep.
What's our recourse to keep, I mean, if they keep doing this every year?
They have that right and we can't stop them from doing that.
Hopefully they'll be satisfied now that it's reduced, that the value is appropriate and will not challenge the next years.
Okay, at this time they think it's appropriate.
That would be the hope, is that they agree that the value is correct and that going forward, if there isn't a change in the market, they'll be satisfied.
If we settle it for this time, so they may not, if we agree with them, right, and settle it. That's what you're saying, they may not.
Right.
They may accept that value.
Or they may.
Right? They may accept that value and go with it, as long as we are.
That is, that is correct.
As long as we're allowing, yeah, okay, not going to push it. Because our only option is to push it forward, not accept it and push forward.
Correct.
Okay.
Braun here. I guess, what kind of numbers would we be looking at spending if we decided not to settle and go, you know, right now we need about, you know, $5,000, whatever that second number was that you said?
We would...
Do we need any more?
Alda Braun, we would need to hire an appraiser or have an independent. We obviously have appraisal done right now, but it would, we would be required to have an expert. I doubt that we would rely on our appraisal that we have. We would have that at cost and we'd have litigation costs and attorney's fees. I would guess that the eventual cost would be somewhere between $10,000 to $15,000 in total fees that are not recoupable, which is why I was making the rather, why I was making this recommendation. It's not something that I like, but to spend $10,000 to make a point, even if we win, it will be, it'll be a wash and it could be a loss plus something more because they certainly aren't going to stay at that value they had argued for significantly less, which is what they had argued before.
Okay, great, thank you.
So they argued for, Olson, they argued for significantly less. Are they willing to settle for this then? Is that their, I mean...
That's not a question that...
Who came up with this dollar amount?
The Department of Revenue.
The Department of Revenue did? And is Certified Parts willing to accept that?
That is my understanding, yes. It only requires our approval at this point and it will go through.
And we would have to hire a different assessor? Our current assessor couldn't because...
My recommendation would be we'd hire an expert that would come in to validate what our assessor said, yes.
It is a hopefully assessed anyways. Manifaction property, these are state assessments, which is why it's at the DOR for this process, so it's not our, otherwise it would come to the board and review. So this is a state assessed property.
So it's a state assessed property, so the state is saying that's what it's worth?
That's why they've been running with this throughout, yes, but we have, we filed an answer because it impacts us and so we wanted to be involved. We had not filed an answer, we wouldn't even get to have the question posed to us. I can tell you that she didn't expect them to accept it.
The state, the person from the state representative doesn't expect...
Did not.
Did not expect them to accept it?
She was surprised they accepted it.
Oh, then, okay, I see what you mean.
Well, hearing that, this is Davis. What, did you have...
I just say it must be costing them some pretty good litigation funds too, they're willing to stop.
It presumably is costing them something as well, yeah. I doubt that their fees will, that this will cover if they're hoping to gain back some of it, would be my guess, yes.
Davis, make a motion to approve the proposed DOR tax appeal settlement to reduce assessed value at 405 East Fulton Street.
Burdick, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
ESU?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to one. Next item is to consider operational change to shared ride taxi program to provide free package delivery from the food pantry during COVID-19 emergency.
Make a motion to approve the operational change to shared ride taxi program.
Second, Olson.
That was ESU with the motion to...
ESU.
Approve that, so. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
ESU?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm here, all the persons and staff reports. New playground equipment's going in. Census, Edgerton is doing very well, we're at 60.2% and the state average is 52.4. All this helps keep people off the street when this does have to get the door-to-door counting and saves us money and makes it safer for everybody at home. There is an election tomorrow, as of 5:00 tonight. I don't think it'll change now. I probably shouldn't have said that, but, so, everything's being done here to make it as safe as possible for the people working here and those that come in to vote. And I want to thank the city staff for all their efforts during the situation that we've been involved with here now, between police department and their things they've had to deal with, the public works guys and straightening things out, and then the library getting shut down. Sorry to the public for that. I know it's a valuable resource that a lot of people are missing right now. And then the city hall staff for everything that's happened the last couple of weeks with the early voting and the amount of absentees that have been sent out, it's just been amazing. And Jenny for sticking around tonight to run this thing here to get us through, get us through this unusual situation, let's say. It's kind of different to have Sarah and Ann not here and try to have conversation with you and you're not here to talk to them, so. So thank you, everybody, and hopefully we can get through this and it's kind of lonely up here, so.
Council congratulates them as well.
Yes.
Yes.
I second that.
Excellent job, everybody.
Yes.
I love you.
So if we're done with that, we will move on to the closed session portion here.
Davis, motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Discuss and consider Veterans Memorial Building offer to purchase.
ESU, second.
Name first, please.
ESU, second.
They both did, I think, didn't they?
Both did.
Yeah, they just said it at the same time, so you couldn't hear them.
I'll talk to you.
So you got one of them, Cindy?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion on going into closed session? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
ESU?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Sorry, I was shuffling papers, yes.
Braun?
Yes.
They're in closed session, so we'll give Sarah and Ann a little time to get on the other line.
Thank you.
Yes, I did.
So do we need the...